I'd like to call the February 13, 2020, meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you to all those that have come to the meeting to see what's happened in our city. Lord, we thank you for allowing us the opportunity to represent your city. And, Lord, we ask that what we do is pleasing in your sight and that we will carry out the business of the city open and honestly. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Connolly.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Present.
Councilmember Meyerhoffer.
I am here.
Mayor Connolly, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on now to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
I have no changes, Mayor.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
I'd like to add a special recognition before the public comment period, so 5A.
Second. Before the public comment period or after?
Before.
Okay. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Mayor?
I would like to add a resolution to the budget of the City Council and the City of Greenville supporting the state's proposed BNI budget.
Second.
What item number? What do you want it?
It would be item number 17.
Item number 17.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. All right.
You're doing that?
Yep. We'll move on to the special recognition. If you only knew the look on the City Manager's face right now, because she has no idea why all the council members are sitting up here for a special recognition that she has no idea about. So we'd like to call our City Manager, Ann Wall, up here.
Be careful with Will over there on the crutches.
All right. There was a press release that went out today and I'm gonna read it for you. Ann E. Wall, City Manager of Greenville, North Carolina, recently received the credential manager designation for ICMA, the International City-County Management Association. Wall is one of over 1,300 local government management professionals currently credentialed through the ICMA voluntary credentialing program. ICMA's mission is to advance professional local government through leadership, management, innovation, and ethics by increasing the proficiency of appointed chief administrative officers, assistant administrators, and other employees who serve local governments and regional entities around the world. The organization's 13,000 members in 27 countries also include educators, students, and other local government employees. To receive this prestigious ICMA credential, a member must have significant experience as a senior management executive in local government, have earned a degree preferably in public administration or related field, and demonstrated a commitment to high standards of integrity and to lifelong learning and professional development. Wall is qualified by nearly 30 years of professional local government experience. Prior to her appointment in 2017 as City Manager of Greenville, she served as an assistant City Manager in Charlotte and Raleigh. During her time in Greenville, Wall has provided direct oversight over the police and fire and rescue departments along with City Public Information Office. Additionally, Wall also served on boards of the Greenville Utilities Commission, the United Way of Pitt County, and the Greenville-Pitt Chamber of Commerce. She's also a member of the Greenville Noon Rotary. So on behalf of the Mayor and the City Council, we want to say congratulations on this outstanding achievement and we're very, very proud. And Councilmember Smiley, we'd like to give you a recognition.
Well, thank you all.
Let's give her a round of applause.
I was thinking of this one on the agenda and I couldn't quite figure out what was going on, so.
Would you like to say some comments?
Well, I would say I am very appreciative of being recognized by ICMA. I have the fortune of working in this great community and with a really great staff and with a really great council. So thank you all very much. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Michael?
Okay. Wow. Okay. Everybody scoot in. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right.
I'm gonna scoot the chair and say it's over. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, now we'll move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with a city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who had registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Ms. Diane Kulick.
Mayor Connolly, Pro Tem Rose Glover, City Council Members, and City Manager Ann Wall. Tonight, I would like to share a vision I have for the City of Greenville to start a new annual event. That would be the Greater Greenville Job Fair. We have a lot of people in this city that need jobs, that go out looking for jobs, and they really have trouble finding a good job. Part of the problem is they don't know where there are openings. A few years ago, somebody asked me if I could help him find a job, and he said his wife had a job, but he needed one too, and he needed help. He didn't know how to find one. And that sort of shook me up. I mean, I felt really bad about it. My husband, who was an economic developer, and I both tried to help him. Eventually, he did find a job. If I was planning the event, I just wanted to say, I would try to do it in the spring or summer or fall, so we wouldn't have a lot of people trying to come to this event and have snow and ice. An easy central location would be our excellent convention center, and I think that would be the best. Also Saturday, when people could come easily and have time to stay. A big event like this would probably get a lot of TV and newspaper coverage. We would be able maybe also, beside the newspaper and the TV, to maybe use the electronic signs. And I also was thinking NAB and all the boards and commissions could probably advertise it to get the word across everywhere. I don't know why we don't do that more often, because it seems like a no-brainer to me. Part of what cities do is try to give residents a good standard of life. People need a good job and it will give them peace of mind. Hopefully, we could have entry-level jobs, skilled labor, professional level, any jobs that were available, plus involve ECU, Pitt Community College with their short-term training or workforce training, and the Chamber of Commerce. It would be important to find out what openings there are, and one of the things I was thinking was that it also would help our city departments to have a consolidation with an event like this with the police and the fire department and public works that a lot of times do have openings, but people don't know about them. So a person might come to apply for one particular job but be walking around and find a career path that maybe they hadn't even thought of. Many cities have a disconnect between workers needing a job and city and businesses who have jobs and need workers. So let's step up and provide this wonderful annual event and help our workers, citizens, and businesses get together so everybody could prosper.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kulick.
Sure.
Can somebody from the staff work with Ms. Kulick to?
What?
I'm asking if we can get the staff to work with you about the Greater Greenville Job Fair.
Okay.
So if somebody could work with her.
Well, you all could think about it. Just with what's happened recently, would you all know what I'm talking about with jobs? It just seems really sad that there are jobs out there for people, and yet they don't know how to even start looking. So I think if a lot of different entities and the Chamber of Commerce, I think it was on there, but I didn't say it.
Absolutely.
Anyway, I think it's a good idea.
I think so, too. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think that we'll look forward to it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Wagner Grubb. Good evening. Thank you guys for letting me come speak. My name is Wagner Grubb, and I have lived in Greenville for nearly 25 years. I am so appreciative of the work that the police force has given to our community. I'm not here to minimize their efforts. I am here, however, as a very concerned citizen for an incident that happened at our local high school basketball game. The game was Rose South Central, and a student was arrested in front of a gym full, in front of his peers, his basketball team, and his coaches. This student is a dear friend of my son's, and I'm asking if there's a protocol for an arrest that takes into account a minor with his or her fragile emotional state. Their identity is invested so much in their peers and how they are viewed. Their sense of self-worth is so fragile and they'd do anything to fit into a group. This particular student has made a new group of friends. He's playing on the varsity basketball team, which has become his new family. The arrest has now become a negative consequence for this child, not only for his past peer group, for the current peer group that he's with, alienating him now from his classmates at Rose, his players on the team who have helped him make better decisions. I'm sorry. Could there have possibly been a more discreet way to do this, asking a coach or a teacher for help, to possibly provide a quieter, more civil, less embarrassing way to take him into custody? We need to give our kids the best chance to succeed. My son Tanner plays basketball with this child every day. They've talked about the decisions that have been made. They've talked about decisions that can be made going forward, and they've talked about the consequences for the decisions that have been made. I am not here to defend what has been done. I'm simply asking, could there have been a better way? I know that our police department has truly worked hard to build trust in our community. I want to continue to see that moving forward. I would love to see our city have a committee or a task force to work on ideas or protocols, ways to get our youth a different avenue, and I'm happy to help volunteer or plug in in any way, sort or fashion that I can do that. We have senior night tonight at Rose. I'm headed to support these kids. They're a family, and we've got a lot to work on here in Greenville. And I'm asking for each of you to take a deep look tonight at our youth and ask how we can help them navigate this rough world that we sometimes find ourselves in. I'm so sorry for the emotion, maybe because I've got a senior that's graduating, and I'd love to see this particular child have the same opportunities that my son has had. So I ask you to think about it, and if I can help you guys in any way, I am so more than happy. Thank you for your work, and thank you for your work, and we'll be there for anything you need.
Thank you, Ms. Grubb. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, or Madam Manager, can you look into that and see if you can provide the council with some feedback as far as the normal protocol of something of that nature?
I will do that.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
Norma Warren.
Good evening.
Congratulations. Well deserved. My name is Norma Warren, and I actually serve in many capacities in this community. Tonight, I am here on behalf of all children, black, white, blue, green, yellow, purple, it doesn't matter. When I heard about the incident at Rose High School, I was mortified. Actually, it was between Rose and South Central, and knowing that many of the children who have come through the Jackie Robinson Baseball League were probably present at that incident, and knowing that for the last 10 years, we have been in partnership with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation and the Badges for Baseball Program. Badges for Baseball actually is a program implemented through the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation to make sure that all children, specifically those children in rural communities, understand that police officers are our friends. We are very excited about the opportunity afforded to us by Cal Ripken Senior Foundation and the Greenville Police Department, and we encourage all of our children to understand that those police officers should be our advocates, and we should be able to go to them with whatever concerns we have. To actually know and to have been informed that the Greenville Police Department took it upon themselves to arrest a child amongst hundreds of other children, literally took me backwards, backwards. And we literally will have to start over with many of those children who have aged out of our program, understanding that everything that we taught them was not in vain, that it is still something that is true. And I thank God for the Greenville Police Department. I know the chief is here tonight, and I want to publicly say thank you for everything that you have done, but this one particular incident needs to be addressed, and we need to find out what type of protocol is necessary to make sure that children do not feel that our police officers are not our friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. We'll look into the situation, and thank you for all that you do for our youth and our community. Madam Clerk, our next speaker?
There are no additional speakers.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Pro Tem, all the other officials who have gathered here this afternoon. My name is Brandon Dawson. I'm a virtual nobody here in this city. I work in Jacksonville, and I drove an hour and 20 minutes to make sure that I could be here to voice my opinion regarding what the two previous young ladies just spoke about, which is the incident that took place at South Central, I'm sorry, Rose High School the other night. The other night, I was on social media, and there's a feature that allows you to sift through friends that you may know, and I saw a picture of a guy that I went to high school with, and when I looked at his name, I realized that in all the years that I'd known him, I didn't know his real name. We called him Eyeball. And the reason why we called him Eyeball is because in elementary school, while kids are doing the dumb stuff that children do, he flipped down his eyelid and let the little pink part sit over his eyeball. Well, it got stuck, and he ran around for the next 30 to 45 seconds, which felt like two or three hours, saying, "My eyeball, my eyeball." And that name stuck with him as a result of a very embarrassing situation. It's funny that the other night, this young man may very well be known better for what happened as a reflection of a very embarrassing situation. Him needing to be arrested is not what this conversation is about. I'm not concerned that the police officers in this city do their job in holding the citizens accountable, but it is not their job to embarrass this young man in very impressionable years of his life, after having made a mistake yet, showing behavior reflective of wanting to do better, maintaining the GPA, as well as the behavior in school to be on the basketball team. I feel like he deserved better than that. I feel like we, as citizens, deserve better than that, than to have a police officer who is responsible for superintending and holding us accountable, not have enough discretion to think to himself that maybe there is a better way to go about doing this. If you knew that this little boy was at a basketball game, you knew that that little boy had a basketball coach. You knew he had a principal, teachers. Somehow or another, we could have gone about holding him accountable for missing a court date as opposed to making a public shame of him in front of all of his peers. Eyeball's nickname is eyeball behind something silly. If I see him in public, I still call him Eyeball, but that embarrassing moment was not one that would traumatize him moving forward and cause him to question his relationship with those that are called to protect and serve him. We've gotta do better in this city. The discretion that was applied in this situation was in a very mild and non-hostile situation, but it was the same misappropriation of authority that leads us to know that last week was Trayvon Martin's birthday, a young black boy that we should not know because of what happened to him should not have been a national tragedy. And so I thank you to the Greenville Police Department's chief who is here and all other officials who are responsible for making sure that we are safe. I challenge you to do better, to make sure that in holding us accountable, doing the what, that we don't overlook the how, that we get that job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dawson.
Well said, Mr. Dawson.
And you are somebody, and your opinion does matter, so thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I tried to let Brandon be the last thing said. My name is Barry Berry. I'm Pastor Philip R. Baptist Church in Simpson. Both my children graduated from DH Connolly. I taught and coached at DH Connolly, so needless to say, we were rivals of Rose and South Central, so this isn't about team. This is just about a young man, young boy. Sometimes we fly by stuff or we let it go, and also, 10 years military police officer, so I'm so pro-police, it doesn't make any sense. Amen?
Amen.
But we need to do it the right way. Come on. In order to play in a game in the evening, you must attend school that day. So that means this child could have been taken out of school, go to the office, have him summoned to the office, summoned to the coach's office, and taken out with not a whole lot of fanfare and without a lot of folk knowing. But no matter what we do going forward, this child will be marked. I asked my wife, I said, "When our daughter was in school, had we been sitting in the bleachers and saw a child taken out by several police officers? If four weeks from then, he showed up at the house and said he was there to see Bianca, would we let him?" And the answer is no. I know we're better. I'm from New York. I've been here since '95. I love Greenville. I'm not going anywhere. I know we're better, and I'm trusting my God that we'll do better.
Yes.
Thank you, Pastor Berry. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and we'll move on to appointments.
I'd like to say something.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yeah. I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to come and support this young man. Trust is built, and it's something that we, as a council, commit to do along with the Greenville Police Department. And one thing this young man will know is that someone cared enough to fight for him. And so it means a lot that all of you took time out of your day to come and support him and to show him that, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your appointment's on, you know? Okay. I was in the daze. Is it time for me?
We're good. No. We're gonna move on now to the appointments. Madam Clerk?
Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Daniels.
I make a motion to remove all eligible members.
I'd like to appoint all eligible members.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Ayes have it. Congratulations, all available members.
Human Relations Council, Mayor Pro Tem Rose Glover.
I'd like to appoint Hina Shaw and, wait, where are we, HRC?
Yeah, HRC.
Okay. Hina Shaw.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Meyerhoffer. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations, Hina Shaw.
Police Community Relations Committee, Councilmember Bell.
Continue, please.
Youth Council, Mayor Pro Tem Rose Glover.
Youth Council, I'd like to appoint Asia Gourm.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations to Asia Gourm.
Okay, that concludes our boards.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on now to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We're at public hearings.
All right.
Our first public hearing of the night will be an ordinance to annex the Ford JP2 LLC property involving 24.585 acres located along the East 14th Street adjacent to Planters Walk subdivision and Coyle Ridge Town Homes. And I'll call for Lead Planner Shante Gooby, who'll have the presentation.
All right. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the City Council. A petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and of the City Council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with the adopted policy of the City Council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is a distraction and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Ms. Gooby?
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is an annexation. It's located in the eastern section of the city. It's specifically located along East 14th Street, so this is between Greenville Boulevard and Fire Tower Road. As you can see, the rest of the city limits is shown in green. This particular property is shown in red. This is only for the JP2 High School Athletic Complex. School is already in the city limits. It's located in the Bell's Branch Meeting House watershed. This is a survey. Again, it's a little over 24 acres. It'll be located in voting district number four, and the estimated tax value is 1.3 million, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right. Seeing none, those in opposition may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mayor. Item number three is an ordinance to annex Davenport Farms at Emerald Park Phase 4 involving 6.6125 acres located off of Davenport Farm Road in the Emerald Park subdivision at the current terminus of Zirkon Road. Again, Ms. Goody.
Okay.
Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number three.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Mayor. Item number three is an ordinance to annex Davenport Farms at Emerald Park Phase Four involving 6.6125 acres located off of Davenport Farm Road in the Emerald Park subdivision at the current terminus of Zirkon Road. Again, Ms. Gubi.
Okay. This annexation is located in the southwestern section of the city. It's located along Davenport Farm Road. Again, the subject property is shown in red. This is in the Swift Creek watershed. It'll be in voting district number two. Staff anticipates 23 single-family lots with an estimated tax value of $4 million. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gubi? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes and all others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right, seeing none. Close the public hearing. Open for board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is an ordinance to annex Beverly W. Joiner's property located involving 7.79 acres on the northern side of East Fire Tower Road in between Charles Boulevard and East 14th Street.
This annexation is located in the eastern section of the city. It is along Fire Tower Road in between Charles Boulevard and 14th Street. Again, subject property is shown in red. It is in the Meeting House branch watershed. Staff anticipates approximately 86 multifamily units with an estimated tax value at 12 million. And again, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gubi? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion? All right, motion been made by Councilmember Lishfield, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number six, five.
Ordinance five is an ordinance to annex Tuberna Phase Four involving 13.8318 acres located on the western side of Frog Level Road just north of the intersection of Davenport Farm Road. Again, Ms. Gubi.
Okay. This annexation is located in the southwestern section of the city. It's located along Frog Level Road just north of Davenport Farm Road. It's located in the Swift Creek watershed. It'll be in voting district number two. Staff anticipates 29 single-family lots and estimated value at 6 million. And again, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gubi? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is an ordinance requested by Tipton Reynolds LLC to rezone 2.514 acres located at Sarah Lane off of Evans Street from R9 to R6. Staff Planner Brad Sevier will provide the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Brad Sevier. I work with the Planning Division here at the city. The property is located centrally in the city. More specifically, it's located on Sarah Lane, which is just off of Evans Street. This is a picture of the subject property. You're looking at it across Evans Street towards Sarah Lane. The property is two tracts. It's 2.514 acres. Currently on the site, there are eight duplexes, which is a total of 16 units. And you can see the brown on the map around it. That's multifamily development. The subject property is not in the floodplain. It is, however, in the Fork Swamp watershed. And if storm water mitigation is required, then there'll be a 10-year detention and nitrogen reduction. The rezoning has the potential to increase the trips on site by 95 a day. You can see here, the current zoning is R9. And with the rezoning request, the site could go from eight duplexes to between 25 and 30 multifamily units. The future land use and character map recommends the area for high-density residential. You can see that orange color there and most of the area around it. As you progress up Evans towards Greenville Boulevard, it gets more commercial character. The requested zoning district is compatible with this high-density residential designation. At its meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the recommendation to rezone the property. And the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and the future land use and character map, so staff also recommends approval of the request. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? Did I say that right? Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Anderson. I'm here tonight on behalf of Tipton Reynolds. This request is pretty simple. We're just requesting the R6 zoning to match the surrounding zoning. Basically filling in the hole. The request is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It's compatible with the existing use and also compatible with the surrounding uses. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, motion's been made. Who do you like to second?
Whatever, doesn't matter. Second.
All right, motion been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number seven.
Item number seven is an ordinance requested by Rocky Russell Development LLC to rezone .1817 acres located at 4020 Laurel Ridge Park from office to residential medium-density multifamily. I'll call Brad forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brad Sevier of the Planning Division again. This request is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, it's located at 4020 Laurel Ridge Drive, which is just off of Allen Road and the intersection with Dickinson Avenue there. This is a picture of the subject property. It's pretty small. You're on Laurel Ridge Road just facing the property in it. It's just one tract and it's .187 acres. Currently, the property is vacant. You can see the yellow just surrounding it and that's single-family, but a lot of the property around it is also vacant. The property is not in the floodplain. It is part of the Greens Mill Run watershed. And if it is required, then there'll be a 25-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. There won't be very much of a traffic impact on the site because it's so small. I'd actually see a net decrease of one trips per day. The property's currently vacant. As you can kind of see here, the blue is the office that we're talking about and that lighter yellow is the R6A they're trying to move towards. And you can see that the rest of the subdivision and all the houses in it are actually already zoned R6A just at the time that they established the zoning in 2003 for this area. They put the line in kind of the wrong spot. So this particular lot got caught out and couldn't be built upon. So we're just trying to fix that here tonight. And you can see on the future land use and character map that low to medium-density residential is recommended for the area. And that kind of transitions towards a more commercial character as you approach Dickinson, but this whole area is expected to be pretty much what the zoning is requested. You can see here how the future land use and character map and the zoning map don't quite line up in this case, and that would be corrected with the rezoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the request. It is January 21 meeting. And staff finds that the request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and the future land use and character map, and so recommends approval of the request.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? All right, thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion? All right, motion been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number eight.
Item number eight is an ordinance requested by HBL Investments LLC to rezone 4.122 acres located at the terminus of Morton Lane and Gordon Drive from R6S to R6. Ms. Gubi?
All right, this is, rezoning is located sort of in the western section of the city. It's located at the end of Morton Lane and Gordon Drive. It looks a little strange, the shapes of them, but when we get a little further in, you're gonna kind of see exactly what's going on here. They are located within the Lake Ellsworth subdivision. So this is at the terminus of Morton Lane. The street's already there. And then this is at the end of Gordon Drive. And you can see that road has not been put in just yet. Both of those parcels together are a little over four acres. They are currently vacant. The properties here to the south, these are all single-family. The pink color, that's duplexes. And eventually, what's gonna happen is that this street is going to go up here. It's gonna turn. It's gonna connect to Ellsworth Drive. And then this street is gonna be extended to connect with it. So eventually, those street connections are gonna be made. The property is not impacted by the floodway. It is, however, located in the Green Mill Run watershed, so it will be 25-year detention. This request could have a net increase of 77 trips per day. The request is essentially going to go from single-family, which is in the green, to R6. Staff would anticipate that these two properties are going to be developed similarly as Ellsworth Drive. Again, you have the same zoning for those. And again, those streets are essentially gonna connect and go back to Ellsworth. Under the current zoning, there could be eight single-family lots. Under the requested zoning, it could be eight duplex lots or 16 units. The future land use plan recommends high-density residential. You can see along Nantucket, along Ellsworth Drive. And then as you move into the interior area, it does sort of step down to a low-medium density. Both of these, or both of these land use, or this is at an area of transition within the land use plan. So in staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the future land use plan. And staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to approve it, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gubi? Thank you. All right, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, my name is Scott Anderson. I'm here tonight on behalf of HBO Investments. Shante, can you put back up the slide that shows?
Is that one okay?
Yeah. So this property, this request is really trying to clean up the zoning lines to match the parcel lines. As Shante mentioned, the street patterns for Morton Lane and Gaston Way, which Morton Lane, I wish I need a pointer. Can you point for me? Morton Lane is the one at the top that kind of makes the loop, which in the first picture that Shante posted of the new street, that's where Shante is standing. So that street's already been built. And that street's just been recently platted, and that roadway is already there. And then Gaston Way is the little piece of orange that goes straight up the page from there. So what we're trying to do with this rezoning is get the zoning lines to match the parcel lines so that all of the parcel has the same zoning. Have you got a zoning map, or so you can see the parcel lines? Do I have an overhead?
Your side may not work. If you hand it to me. If Kelvin can turn on the camera.
It is magic. There we go.
And then once he stops, I'll move it. There we go, all right. Is that okay? Do you want me to turn it?
No, that's good, I think. Yeah. So you can kind of see in the, I need to be able to point.
Can I come around here?
Sure. Sorry. So this is Morton Lane that's recently been constructed and platted. And this is our entire parcel. So right now, we've got two zoning designations. So all we're trying to do is just clean that up and get the same zoning designation on that entire parcel. And then the same thing here, this parcel was recently platted to get all as one parcel. So again, we're just trying to get that same zoning designation across that entire parcel. Is what we're trying to do. Trying to keep it simple, although it's really complicated on the map that we have right now. Any questions? Can I make that any clearer?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Councilmember Smiley?
I understand why that's convenient for you. I guess, why is that in the best interest of the land use map and the public? And you're saying you're just trying to make them, you know, get all of your land to have the same zoning, but it had the zoning when you bought it. So, you know, why is this in the best interest of the public and the land use as opposed to why it's most convenient for you and your client?
Well, what we've got right now are just kind of some odd-shaped pieces that have zoning that doesn't really fit the shape of the parcel based on the residual pieces that are kind of left over from where we're at.
Any other questions? All right, any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to the next item. Madam Manager.
Item number nine is an ordinance requested by John Marvin Taft to rezone 2.209 acres located at 3180 Charles Boulevard from RA 20 to office residential, OR. And I'll call Brad Borck.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Brad Sevier, the Planning Division again. This, this particular property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. You can see here, more specifically where it's located, it's just off of Charles Boulevard. It's just, it's just south of the landing if you're going towards Fire Tower, past the landing, and it's, it's just there on the right. This is a picture of the property, the subject property, and this is going down Charles, towards Fire Tower, and you can see the Farm Bureau there. It's one parcel. It's 2.209 acres. Currently, the property is being used as this, for a single-family residence. There's just one, one house on that property, and you can see the, the brown surrounding it. That is more multifamily development, and the, the blue there, that's, that's office development. So it's a little out of place. The city's kind of grown up around it a bit. The property is not in the floodplain. However, it is in the Fork Swamp watershed, and if it is required, they'll, for stormwater purposes, there'll be 25-year detention, and both nitrogen and phosphorus reduction required. The rezoning has the potential to increase the, the traffic by 190 trips per day down Charles there. This is a picture of the zoning map, and I think it's a little compelling. It's in, the subject property's in the green here, it's that RA 20, and they're requesting to go to OR, which is in the blue, and you can see all surrounding the property is, is more OR. It really is a little out of place with the way that development has gone in the area. As I said previously, it's currently single-family. The, the site does have the potential to accommodate between 25 and 30 multifamily units if the rezoning is granted. You can see that the, the future land use and character map recommends high-density residential for the site, which would kind of match up with surrounding development. And you can see that it transitions from that high-density residential down to commercial as you approach Fire Tower Road, and that's a very appropriate style of development for the area. The request is in compliance with both the Horizons Future Land Use Plan as well as the Future Land Use and Character Map, and at its most recent January 21 meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to approve the request. Thanks.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Sevier? Seeing none. Thank you very much. All right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Mayor Pro Tim Glover. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. All right. We'll move on to item number 10. Madam Manager.
Item number 10 is a resolution to close a portion of Bonner's Lane. City Engineer Lisa Kirby is available for questions. I think we see you in the map.
I do. And actually, we have grouped all three items together...
Okay.
...into one map. So we've got item 11 for the closure of South Alley, as well as item 12, the closure of Atlantic Avenue. All three closures are within the Imperial Warehouse area. So the city's requesting to close a portion of Bonner's Lane from the western right-of-way of Atlantic Avenue to the eastern right-of-way of CSX Railroad, which is the top light-blue shaded right-of-way. The city's also requesting to close a portion of South Alley Street from the western right-of-way of Atlantic Avenue to the eastern right-of-way of CSX Railroad, which is the middle light-blue section on the map, as well as the city's also requesting close a portion of Atlantic Avenue from the southern right-of-way of 8th Street to a location about 400 feet north of Dickinson Avenue. More specifically, the Bonner's Lane closure is about 125 feet of approximately 20-foot right-of-way, and the property will revert back to the adjacent property owners, which include the city of Greenville, the Redevelopment District, and Norfolk Southern Railroad. The closure of South Alley Street is approximately 125 feet of 40-foot right-of-way, and that will revert back to the city of Greenville and the Redevelopment District. And Atlantic Avenue is approximately 450 feet of 40-foot right-of-way, which will revert back to the city of Greenville. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Kirby? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor, members of the council, city manager, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to speak and offer my support for the Imperial Site Revitalization Project. Before I begin, I want to thank Ann Wall and her staff.
Thank you. I think we've, just to confirm, Mr. Blunt, I, right now, we're considering the resolutions to close the three streets.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. But we'll be happy to take those appointments in just a minute. Okay.
I'm sure he wants them closed.
But you, you can cheer for the streets to be closed, too.
Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. We'll give you 10 minutes. All right. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
I have a question.
Councilmember Daniels?
Do any of these closures affect businesses in any way in that area?
No, ma'am. The property adjacent to the right-of-way is all publicly owned.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to item number 11.
Item number 11 is a resolution to close a portion of South Alley Street. I'll remind the council that Ms. Kirby just provided a presentation to detail the closing for South, South Alley Street.
Any questions for Ms. Kirby or the staff? All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. All right. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhoff, first, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll move on to item number 12.
Item number 12 is a resolution to close a portion of Atlantic Avenue. Ms. Kirby has previously provided the presentation for Atlantic Avenue.
Any questions for Ms. Kirby or the staff? All right. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is a development agreement between the city of Greenville and Seacoast communities related to the purchase of Imperial property for the development of a hotel and market rate housing. Assistant City Manager Michael Cowan will provide the presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think it's been a few minutes providing an overview of the Imperial project. Then we'll move into an overall summary of the development agreement, discuss the public investments included in the project, and then finally move into the public hearing. The project itself includes a $41 million investment in approximately 5.75 acres of Imperial property that will be developed in two separate phases. First phase includes approximately 110-room boutique hotel with a rooftop bar and lounge with a projected investment of approximately $16 million located right off of Dickinson Avenue. The second phase to begin after the completion of Phase 1 is the addition of approximately 200 market-rate units with an additional 1,200 square feet of, of retail at a projected investment of $25 million. Also included in this is the public investment for a community gathering place located in the heart of Dickinson Avenue, located right off of Clark Street, which is currently a vacant lot, that will be utilized to host various different concerts, farmers' market, and other such public events. Overall, again, we're looking at approximately $41 million investment in this project that puts the Imperial property back on the tax rolls, increases the number of individuals in Uptown between 300 and 400 on a daily basis, increases the annual tax revenues to the city of approximately $195,000, and enhances opportunities for economic growth in our Uptown District as well as the, is around the ECU and their new campus on the other side of 10th Street. We're looking at a net investment, a net income, a net return for the city, I should say, of approximately $3.2 million over 15 years, inclusive of approximately $5.3 million in revenues based off of the sale of the property and various tax revenues, and approximately $2 million in public investment back into the project. Overall, if we look at the requirements of the development agreement, Seacoast will purchase the property at fair market value based off appraisal. The property will be purchased in phases, which we'll talk a little bit more here and about that in a second. The city shall approve the architectural design and all exterior materials and finishes of the project, and Seacoast, the developer, shall fund all the parking related to the project. Seacoast and developer shall include an art component in the project as well as historical features that reflect the history of the Imperial Tobacco Processing Plant and the citizens that both worked and lived in West Greenville. Specifically, Seacoast will be required to spend a minimum of $20,000 for art and history on Phase 1 of the project, and an additional minimum of $35,000 on Phase 2 of the project for both art and history. In addition, the developer shall conduct a series of public input meetings in West Greenville to receive input from the community regarding the ways that the history can be input into the project, and both the developer and the city will work together to jointly select an advisory group to help guide the developer through this process. With concerns to the Phase 1, the boutique hotel, the criteria related to this phase is included in Exhibit C of the agreement. Specifically, it states that the project shall be completed within 20 months of the issuance of the building permit, and the city and Seacoast can mutually agree to extend the completion date due to unforeseen circumstances. If the project is not completed within that 20 months or based on the extended date, then the city shall begin assessing liquidated damages at the rate of $500 per day. The following restrictions apply to the Phase 1 hotel. Hotels shall have a minimum of 90 rooms with a rooftop bar and lounge, and the hotel shall have a hospitality industry rated minimum of three stars. With concerns to Phase 2, the market rate housing, this information can be found in Exhibit D of the agreement, and it pretty much reflects the overall letter of intent that was, that was approved by the council back last October. The city shall convey the Phase 2 property to Seacoast no earlier than the point at which Phase 1 is 80% complete, and no later than the six months after the completion of Phase 1. Other restrictions, it says that the project shall be completed within 24 months. As with Phase 1, the city and Seacoast may mutually agree to extend that completion date. If the project is not completed within 24 months or the mutually agreed upon extension date, the city shall begin assessing liquidate damages at $500 per day. The following are other restrictions that apply to Phase 2. Shall have at least 175 non-student professional units. No quad-style units in the project. Require only one lease per unit with longer-term leases. And the exterior facade shall be no less than 40% masonry and shall not include any With concerns to the historical building component of the project, for Seacoast, shall stabilize and beautify the building in the short term. It shall also restore the building and place it into service as an office or other commercial use contingent on their ability to secure public funding for its renovation, which examples of that public funding are listed there for you. Public investment can be wrapped up into two main categories. We have dollars invested for public improvements as well as capital investment grants. The city shall be responsible for the following infrastructure improvements. The removal of existing infrastructure from the site, which is currently ongoing. We have approximately the next three to four weeks to be able to complete that project. The partial rebuild of Atlantic, which the, the road closure that was just set into, in the motion, will help with that, and that's also a CIP project for the upcoming year. And then the construction of the public parking lot and community plaza, which will be part of the Phase 2 of the project. With concerns to the hotel, there's a capital investment grant that equals 75% of the city property taxes paid by the developer for a period of 12 years, and the requirements on that are contingent on the investment by the developer into the hotel of at least 14 million, and the developer applying for a building permit within 12 months of the approval of the purchase agreement. Also, at any time during the grant period that the hotel does not comply with the restrictions included and as part of the Phase 1 requirements, then the grant shall be terminated, and examples of that would be the rooftop bar or the three-star rating. There's also a, a capital investment grant on the historic office building equal to 75% for 10 years, and that grant is contingent on the building being placed into service for an office or other commercial use, and shall not be used for any residential purposes, and also shall be developed in compliance with the Phase 2 purchase terms. And again, at any time during the grant period that the building does not operate as an office or other commercial use, the grant shall be terminated. In summary, again, it's a $41 million investment, puts the property back on the tax rolls, increases the number of individuals in our Uptown District between 300 and 400 on a daily basis, increases our annual tax revenues, and also enhances opportunity for economic growth within the area. With concerns to the public hearing, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1, we will hold a public hearing related to the development contract, and based on the materials provided by the developer and the probable average hourly wage to be paid to the workers located at the property is estimated to be $21.27 per hour, which is above the average wage rate. average wage rate for the county.
Take any questions? Any questions for Mr. Cowan? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
You know, I've done this for many years, and I hope you guys don't mind me thanking you again. But anyway, thanks for correcting me, and I'm glad to be in front of you tonight. I do want to thank Ann and her staff, and especially Michael. We've had some long days and long conference calls and stressful conference calls, but we got it done, and we thank them for their work, their hard work. This Imperial Site Revitalization Project is really about economic development for our Uptown District. The plan will create much-needed jobs, increase non-student residential living, bring in hotel overnight guests, all of which will increase a much-needed sidewalk foot traffic. The hotel and market rate combined will increase nightly residential to over 400 residents. These are residents who will shop retail, dine at restaurants, sip beer at our breweries, and attend a music event at the State Theater. As we know, there is ample amount of student housing in our Uptown District. The Imperial Site Revitalization Project is a great pivot to serving an unmet need for a hotel and market rate residence. And to add value to this project, I would like to read just two letters of support from Greenville's major employers, one from the public sector, ECU, and one from the private sector, Main Pharma. And these are directed at Ann Wall. It has come to my attention, this is from ECU, it has come to my attention that Greenville has an opportunity to expand market rate housing within Greenville's Uptown vicinity. I simply write to reaffirm my personal view on this need and to suggest that many young professionals hired into ECU would view such an expansion very positively. I have watched with great interest as the Uptown District has rapidly matured into a commercial and residential center with sufficient density and variety to attract additional investments. While we witness new storefronts, restaurants, entertainment, and student housing, we have not yet seen the development of market rate housing intended for young professionals. It's simply a matter of time, but sooner is better for the economic health of the district. The provision of such housing stock is, of course, important to the market segment of faculty and professional staff that we recruit to East and West campuses. A substantial share of these young professionals have already experienced dense, walkable environments during their graduate-level education or in their previous jobs. The urban residential option is often expected during the recruiting visits to Greenville. I can tell you that this type of market rate housing in the Uptown District would be an important piece of our recruiting efforts. I have said as frequently as I can that the future health of this university is entwined with that of the Uptown District, and so we have a keen interest in expanding housing options there for our young professionals. I have witnessed the growth of this housing segment in many college towns, and I'm confident that it will make Greenville an even more attractive destination than it is at present. It's another important piece of our urban puzzle, and I think it's time to put this in place, and it should be a high priority. Very truly yours, Ron Mitchellson. Provost, Senior Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs, and interim chancellor. The second letter is from the private sector, from Main Pharma. Dear Ann, the success of Main Pharma's significant investment in Greenville, North Carolina, and Pitt County region depends on our ability to attract and retain world-class scientific and pharmaceutical talent from a highly competitive and very diverse global talent pool. For this reason, I feel compelled to write to express Main Pharma's support for efforts to bring additional market rate housing to the downtown area of Greenville. Doing so will add additional momentum to the burgeoning renaissance of the Uptown District and meets a very specific need for the young professionals in our region. Main Pharma employs a considerable number of young chemists and young professionals, and over the years, retention of this talent base has proven to be challenging. One of the most frequently cited reasons for leaving is the desire to relocate to areas they perceive as often more vital downtown urban environment with a more significant critical mass of their contemporaries. Developing and attracting market rate housing in the Uptown District directly answers this gap and will strengthen our recruitment and retention efforts. Very truly yours, Andrew Herbman, Vice President for Human Resources. In conclusion, and on behalf of the sidewalk development team, we truly are honored and humbled to stand in front of you to request approval for this transformational redevelopment project. If approved, we look forward to continuing the good work of revitalizing this area off Dickinson Avenue where it will soon serve as an economic development draw for Uptown while increasing the tax base. Thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Ron Garris. I'm a manager of Home Builders Supply on Dickinson Avenue here in Greenville, North Carolina. Home Builders has been located at the same location since 1948. I myself am a lifetime resident of Greenville. My formative years, between the ages of four and 16, I was raised one block north of the Crossroads Community Center. That part of Greenville was vital to the development of Greenville, and it went away for years, and I saw that, I've witnessed of it. Anybody that is coming into town wanting to spend money and revitalize that part of Greenville is very important to me because my grandparents ran a business on the corner of Dickinson Avenue and Pitt Street for approximately 40 years. At that time, the only place in Pitt County that you could get your license for the back of your vehicle, you had to go to that one location in Greenville. Everybody went there. The town was bustling, there was just businesses everywhere. All of that went away. I see it coming back. As a manager of a home building supply business, anything that helps in the growth of Greenville helps us grow, just brings jobs, it brings more people. This revitalization is just part of what we need to do as a city, and I thank y'all for allowing us to come and talk to you tonight.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. I represent Winslow's Tavern, and I'm really excited about this project because of the histories involved with it. As you know, Winslow's took a historic building and restored it and created a very lovely place to visit, drink, and have food, and I can foresee the adverse things we're doing with this Imperial Center being an asset to everything there is in Greenville. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. It's the Councilmembers.
Good evening.
My name is Justin Gilmer. I'm one of the managers of Still Life at Nightclub. I also want to offer my support fully for the redevelopment of the Imperial Tobacco Site. Our establishment alone would benefit tremendously from 121 hotel and market rate apartments for young professionals in this area. The project, once completed, will increase the foot traffic, which would just immensely help out the businesses downtown. And the merchants, that's what we need, more foot traffic downtown to make sure that the merchants downtown are successful. Projects like this will allow us to increase our business, which will require us to hire more staff, create more jobs in our downtown community overall. It's a place that I would also consider living, being 24-years-old and being a young professional downtown, having a site like this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is Samantha Kugel. I graduated in December of 2018 from ECU. I'm currently a young professional in the area as well, and although I love living around ECU students, I think it would be great to be in an area where I can be with other people that are in the young professionals world as well as I am. It'd be nice to be able to enjoy time with people my age as well as then being around to all these ECU students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward and state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, guys. I'm Whitney Spivey. I am a graduate student at ECU right now in the Department of Geological Sciences, and I'm originally from DC, so you can imagine a little bit of culture shock coming down here. I'm also 31, so I am not typical grad student age, and quite frankly, I wish a development like this already existed here in ECU, or here in Greenville. I've found that in our department, we tend to have slightly older graduate students, and we come from very diverse backgrounds, and something like this really hits home to what I'm used to seeing. I'm used to being around young working professionals who, quite frankly, aren't so concerned about partying all the time, and investing in local art is something that I am very used to seeing, again, being from DC. And having a hotel that's right next to where I live is great, because when my parents come and visit me, where I currently live, there is nowhere in walking distance from where I am, so it can be very frustrating. I have an 11-year-old niece that I have raised for the vast majority of her life, and being able to walk around downtown and show her things and do all of that is, would have been great for my time here. Young professionals and graduate students are the people who invest in your community. Quite frankly, not undergrads. So again, I wish something like this already existed. It would have made my time here much, much better. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor, Council. My name's Corbin Harris, and I am the franchisee for the Jimmy Johns here in Greenville. When I first came down here, I made a capital investment, not just looking at a college town, but looking at the community that we have here. And this Imperial project that we have coming here, to me, it shows a lot of investment that is going to be outside of just your typical school calendar year. That's going to help investment during the summer, it's going to create more jobs. Again, we talked about the amount of foot traffic that we can gain from this, the jobs that are going to come from this, and those directly impact myself as a business owner. I've got two young children at home, so this is something that I look forward to. I get excited for, because again, this is a project that we sorely do not have here, and it is something that will add a great amount of, I guess, a good way to say it, is just going to add more diversity to our environment that we have here to attract that young talent, to keep that talent, and to just grow the city even more. And again, starting small, growing big, and that's what I like to see. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, guys. My name's Kimberly Coolers. I didn't plan on speaking to you guys about this, but I'm so excited that I have to say something. So my husband and I purchased the Jones Lee house on Green Street, so sitting here, like I just had to get out of my seat because I'm so happy about this. I'm an ECU graduate, and ECU has changed a lot, Greenville's changed a lot, and we're excited because we thought Greenville would be a great place for us to come back to, to invest, and I can't tell you how excited this makes us because we're like, this is the right place, we did the right thing, and the community is growing and continuing to grow, so I just wanted to say I was excited. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hey. My name is Michael Glenn, and actually, you know, I was going to wait and speak in opposition, but let me, you know, I'm not here to torpedo this plan, so let me change gears a little bit. You know, I'm a stakeholder, I'm a property owner in the neighborhood, and you know, I agree with everything that's being said, you know, who doesn't want market rate housing and a hotel? You know, that all sounds great. And, you know, my concern is really just about the design of the project, and while I want to see it move forward, you know, I've had some conversations with Jim Blunt, and you know, I understand that the economics may not support structured parking, but you know, when this is laid out and it's on the ground, it's going to be a tremendous amount of asphalt, you know, a lot of surface parking area, and you know, it just doesn't fit, you know, good urban design, and I think that that's what's, where he and I have sparred a little bit, but you know, I do respect the time that's been spent on this project, and you know, I don't want to be the one that's here shooting this down because I know that we need it. I just, you know, when we're disposing of public land, I think that there's a, you know, there's an added pressure to do so in a way that is, you know, really for the long term, and I mean, you know, much longer than, you know, your terms on city council and, you know, whatever's going to, whatever's built is going to outlive all of us in this room, more than likely. So, you know, we have one chance to do this, and I think it's important we speak up and demand the best we can out of what we are looking to build here. So, again, you know, I'll make one other comment. I was actually coming to also speak in support of the Grover Gaming job creation, which I know that's later, so I'll hold off on that, but you know, there is a connection between, you know, recruiting and keeping, you know, recruiting and keeping people like that in Greenville, and, you know, I just want to make sure that our downtown residential product is outstanding and we don't miss the mark with this. So I hope the, you guys will take some of that heart, and you know, I want to see this move forward, and I just hope we can get the best out of the site, so thank you.
Thank you. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right. Seeing none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
First of all, Michael Glenn, I appreciate how you changed course there midstream, but I agree with every single thing you said. I don't think anybody else could rationally disagree with what you said. My hope is, to your point, that long after we're gone, it still remains a priority to everyone on city staff and the new property owners, that we do need a deck there. But I think you would agree that at this time, it's not enough there to warrant stopping this entire project. As you said, we need the market rate, we need the hotel. To Jim and the developers, what I would say is, as I'm reading through everything, what dawned on me, in the details, there are multiple mandatory minimums. There's a mandatory minimum for artwork in the hotel, there's a mandatory minimum for artwork in the market rate housing, there's a mandatory minimum for the exterior facade, you know, can contain no less than 40% of masonry. What I would ask, and this is certainly not binding, and you guys have a budget to follow, what I would ask, especially to you, Jim, you live here, I would hope that we're feasible, that you guys, you know, aren't walking the line on every single mandatory minimum and do what you can to maybe go above and beyond, because this really has the opportunity to be a transformational project, and you live here, and I think you'll take some pride in what you're doing here, and you know, I, again, it's not binding, but I hope we're feasible. You guys just don't walk the line of every single mandatory minimum. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Smiley?
I know we're going to talk about a different project coming up where the jobs created are part of the grant. But this one, the Assistant City Manager pointed out that there would be jobs here and that they would be paid likely above the minimum, above the average in the county, but the actual jobs themselves and the wages that are earned are not any, not part of any justification for the grant that's being given. Is that correct?
The grant that is offered for this is a capital investment grant, it is not a job creation grant. A hotel and housing is not a criteria, is not a job category that is included within the job creation grant.
Cool. So this grant is tied exclusively to just the capital investment at the site?
That is right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just add to that, that the administration's asking council to pass two things, the development agreement and a resolution, which makes a finding of the probable average hourly wage to be paid to hotel workers. That's a finding, but it's not a job incentive.
Councilmember Smiley?
So what would be the purpose of the finding?
That finding is required by state law, because the city is selling the property, the real property, by private negotiations, so that finding has to be made regarding the average problem, the average hourly wage to be paid to the workers. average problem, the average hourly wage to be paid to the workers, the probable average hourly wage. It's required by statute.
In order to sell the property as opposed to, that's not related to the capital, the grant. That's related simply to the sale of the property by the city.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Want to entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is a resolution and an economic development agreement for a job creation grant with Grover Gaming, Inc. And I'll, as soon as we go through this, I'll provide a quick presentation for the council. We can hit, if we can go forward to the, there we go. We have a request. If you'll hit the next slide. We have a request. Grover Gaming is incorporated, is headquartered in Greenville. Grover Gaming develops software, game content, and gaming systems. The systems and content are licensed in the following states: New Hampshire, Kentucky, North Dakota, Washington, Canada, Ontario, Canada, Virginia, Montana, and South Dakota. Grover Gaming, in addition to having its headquarters in Greenville, it provides sales and distribution facilities in Georgia, Ohio, Wisconsin, Virginia, New Hampshire, Kentucky, and soon to come in North Dakota. Grover Gaming has indicated that they plan to create 100 jobs in the next one to two years. As part of that project, they will renovate their building one, their one of three buildings on the site, for a cost of about $350,000. Once this expansion is done and with the expansion of operations into other markets, Grover Gaming will also add an additional 210 jobs over the next three to five years and will renovate their building number three at a cost of about $1 million. So with this request for the job creation grant, as I indicated, Grover Gaming will, intends to create over, create 100 jobs. The weighted average annual salary for those jobs is somewhere between $48,900 and $60,000. The kinds of positions that will be included will be, there we go, software developers, studio producers, operations specialists, Unity game developers. Unity is the kind of software that games are developed in, 3D artists, quality assurance engineers, technical support representatives, and audio designers. The company will play, pay 100% of the health insurance for those employees. Again, those positions would be created over the next one to two years. And with the ability to expand in other markets, Grover Gaming would also believe that they would be in the position to add additional positions over the next two to three years. Just to remind the council, our job creation grant has a capital investment of about $500,000. It is eligible to employers, non-hotel, non-retail, that create a minimum of 25 jobs. Those, the employer must pay at least 50% of the health insurance, and the company must be located in the city and/or the ETJ. You'll see the grant award based on the number of positions. We pay the grant over a number of years. Following the completion of those, the hiring of those jobs, any company who receives the grant would have to agree to retain those jobs for a minimum of three years. And so the request of Grover Gaming would be to ask the council to provide a grant of $1,000 per job for five years. So for every job, we would pay $1,000 for five years. That would be up to $100,000 a year maximum for five years. And so that's the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Any questions for Ms. Wall? All right. Seen none. Public hearing's now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor, members of the city council, just wanted to thank you for your consideration of this application. My name is Mark Downing. I'm here on behalf of Grover Gaming. I just wanted to thank city staff for helping us through this process and for each of you for considering this tonight. Just wanted to know, I'm here to answer any questions if you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. All right. Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seen none. Those to speak on behalf of the, or excuse me, on opposition to the applicant, please come forward, state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We will now move on to other items of business. Madam manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item of business is a consideration of amending the agreement with Sidewalk Greenville LLC. Mr. Cowan has that presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
University Edge and Dickinson Loss were developed as a partnership agreement between the city and Sidewalk Greenville LLC. Property that building currently stands on was city property that was conveyed to the developer for use of student rental housing units, market rate housing units, and office and retail space. The agreement, the purchase, original purchase agreement required Sidewalk to provide a minimum of 20,000 square feet of office and retail space on the lower floors and a minimum of 45 market rate housing professional units. Now, city code requires a minimum of 10,000 square feet of office and retail for dormitory style developments. Sidewalk is requesting to amend Exhibit B of the original agreement as follows, to reduce the minimum square footage of office and retail space to 14,000 square feet. The reduced square footage would be above the city code requirement of 10,000 and would be used to add an additional 13 market rate professional units. The 13 additional units would be targeted to professionals who live in an urban setting, and that increase in market rate units is consistent with the findings of the 2017 Kimbley Horn Housing Study. And as you can see there, that's a comparison of the current mix of units to the proposed mixed, mix. The student units would stay the same at 77, and you would see an increase of 13 for the market rate units from 67 to 80. And you can see 144 current units as compared to the proposed 157. This is the location of the proposed reduction in retail, retail, commercial space converted over to market rate housing. It's right there off of Reed Circle. And this is a design of the 13 additional units that average 448 square feet per unit, and they are one-bedroom market rate efficiency units. If the amendment is approved by council, Sidewalk will be required to submit an amended special use permit application to the Board of Adjustments to change the original plan, and they would be required to provide addition, nine additional parking spaces to be in compliance with the special use permit. That's .7 spaces per additional room. Any questions?
Good. So in the last, in the Imperial site, there were other provisions to ensure that the, that address the character of market rate housing and the type of leases?
That, well, in the original agreement, there was no certain-
I'm talking about in the, we just, we just had talked, you talked about the Imperial site.
Yes.
Where, when they, when they, when we talked about the market rate housing, it was, it involved the potential for longer-term leases and I forget-
No cosign.
No cosign. I forget what exactly they were, but is anything like that tied into this?
No, not, no.
Okay.
Of the 20,000 square feet that's currently there, is any of it leased to commercial tenants?
Not that I'm aware of. The developer, if you have any questions about-
And as far as parking, I guess the parking, is that tied to our parking lot that we're currently leasing out per space right now?
Exactly.
And we've got adequate space to be able to provide those nine?
That is, that is something the developer will have to prove through the Board of Adjustments process.
But we're supposed to provide it, right?
No, no. Well, we provide the space, but they have to make sure they have the adequate ratios in that-
But as far, but I'm saying, like, as far as if, if that's a requirement, because I think one of the requirements you said was nine additional spaces.
That's right.
Do we have that for the ability to lease that on our current deck that we have, or excuse me, our current lot that we have?
Can you make a comment on that?
Hi, Rick Banning, the owner of the property. On the parking, there was already an allocation for the commercial to cover the parking.
Okay.
So it's a, it's an equal balance with the commercial to the residential.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. That's all we got?
Thank you.
Any other, any other questions from anyone? Need a motion?
No hearing?
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll move on to the final item. No, excuse me, the second to the last item, 16.
Item number 16 is a license agreement for the Jones Lee House. City Attorney McGirt will work on that, provide that presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to talk about the license agreement for the Jones Lee House. There's a revised agreement before you, and the only difference between this agreement and the one that's in your packet, it adds an indemnification provision that protects the chamber against third-party claims. This is an adjoining property owner. But in summary, the historic Jones Lee House is now located at 304 South Green Street. The owner of the property lacks access for purposes of parking, sanitation, and other business necessities because the property is surrounded by city-owned parcels, except for the frontage. So the owner, as you see in front of you, you have the existing conditions of the Jones Lee House. The owner needs to get access to the city parcels for parking. If you look at, to the screen where I have the cursor here, she needs to access parking in the back of the lot. She also plans to place the dumpster somewhere here, behind the house here, and that will be on city property. So she needs to exit her property to imp, for her trash. And the applicant licensee will also build a dumpster pad. In addition to that, to the north side, the owner needs here a sidewalk use area easement license. We call, we're calling it a license instead of easement for ADA ramp for customers. And to the south of the property, a temporary construction easement is needed. So those are the act, access and encroachments that the property owner needs, and the city administration asks that council approve the license agreement. And in addition, there may be another item coming to council at a future agenda regarding a 10-foot permanent utility easement that the property owner needs for sewer. And all these encroachments are shown on a site plan, a proposed site plan, which should be approved by the city in the near future. And I'm available for any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. McGirt? Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Just checking to see if this was run by Chamber of Commerce. I certainly want to help the owners of the Jones Lee House. Just want to confirm that-
Exactly.
Kate Till or whomever may be responsible at-
Kate Till and-
Chamber.
Yeah. They're on, they're on board. I think she conferred with Mr. Dixon, who I think serves as a council, council to the, to the, to the chamber. So they're on board and they're in agreement.
That was my only concern. Thank you.
And I think the surveyor and the owner are here as well of the Jones Lee House.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Let's make sure we do everything we possibly can to get the owner up and running because Greenville means business, right?
That's right, Mayor.
That's right. So. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to item number 17.
It's a good-looking foundation there.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 17 is a resolution of the city council of the city of Greenville supporting the state's proposed FY19-21 biennial budget.
Would you like to hand this over to Councilmember Litchfield?
I would love to pass this on to Councilmember Litchfield.
All right. Councilmember Litchfield, please make the presentation.
I have added this to the agenda, this resolution for the city council of the city of Greenville to support, supporting the state's proposed fiscal year 19 through 21 biennial budget. And I've added this for the reasons that there are multiple investments in the community and the university, which I feel are very important. That includes $215 million for a new medical education research facility to replace the obsolete Brody School of Medicine, building and support class size expansion, $850,000 in recurring and nonrecurring funds for ECU statewide telepsychiatric program, $1 million to the Eastern AHEC to further develop medical residency programs that support the retention of residency graduates in rural areas, $2.5 million for the Food Commercialization Center in Aiden, and $150,000 for our friends just down the road in Bethel for their water treatment facilities. And so, once again, I put forth this resolution in support of these programs for investments in our community.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. Any discussion, comments? I will say, I think that we all can agree how important these things are to not only Greenville, but our region as well. You know, and I think at the end of the day, I think our hopes are that people will put aside their differences and understand how important it is for us to support eastern North Carolina and understand that there's a lot of benefits. I can tell you personally, I went to one of the aspects of the Brody School of Medicine when my daughter had the flu, and that building is old. It is very, very old. It needs a tremendous amount of work done to it, and, but it's a huge asset to our community. And to be able to take her there after hours was an incredible opportunity, and it was nice because she was able to get really good service when we were needing it. So, again, motion's been made by Councilmember Litchfield, second by Councilmember Bell. Any other comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We'll move on to city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, I have a couple of quick items. First item relates to scheduling. I wanted to recommend two scheduling changes to the city council. First, I'd like to recommend that the council cancel the February 24th council meeting. Additionally, due to a conflict with the National League of Cities meeting, I would like to request that the council cancel the March 9th meeting and hold that March 9th meeting on March the 23rd.
Okay. So cancel the 24th of February meeting.
Right.
And then cancel the March 9th meeting.
Right.
And the meeting you, and the other meeting is already on the agenda.
And that meeting's already on the agenda and just-
I mean, on this calendar.
Right. The March the 23rd, we will hold a workshop as well as the council meeting. So a 4 o'clock workshop as well as a 6 o'clock council meeting.
Move to approve the changes recommended by the manager.
Second. All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The second item is, I do want to remind the council and the community that on February the 19th at 3:30 at 1507 Fleming Street, we'll have the groundbreaking for the Leaking Park houses. We're very excited about this new investment in Whist Greenville, and we hope everybody can be there. And then finally, Mayor and Council, I truly want to thank you for the recognition tonight. I very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. We'll move on to-
Call her CM now.
CM?
CM. Fringe manager.
All right. We'll move on to comments by the mayor and the city council. Councilmember Litchfield?
No comment.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Briefly, just want to say Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. And in addition to obviously loving my wife and family, ECU Pirate Baseball starts tomorrow. So, something else I love, I'd like to encourage the community to go out this weekend. Should be pretty nice weather, relatively speaking for February, so get out and support the Diamond Pirates. the Diamond Pirates, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Smiley? Councilmember Bell?
No comment.
Councilmember Daniels? Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Nope.
Uh-uh. All right, well-
It's your turn.
Hey, that leaves it to me, and I have a very, very special thing I'd like to say. My daughter, my oldest daughter, Mary Kate, has a very special day on Saturday. She will be celebrating her seventh birthday, so I want to wish her a happy birthday. I can remember holding her in my arms the day that she was born, seven years ago, and it was an incredible moment, so, she has been an absolute blessing to me and our entire family, so happy birthday, Mary Kate. And also, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. I've got three incredible Valentines that I get to spoil tomorrow, and nothing says I love you like baseball. So, make sure you get out and support the Pirates. And that is it.
It's your turn.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Less than two hours.
Shante?
Less than two hours.
I just want to ask you a question, since you didn't get asked a question all night.
Public hearing, less than two hours.
Do you feel neglected that you didn't get a question posed to you this evening?
I was getting a little mad at Scott Anderson there, when he showed up twice.
At the end, in the, in the fourth one, I was actually just going to be, I was actually just going to say, hey, Shante, this is a term of due for solemnity.
Hey, we took care of you tonight. Okay.
Can't get away from a game.
I'm coming.